Meeting of the Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls Planning Commissions. Once again, reminder that if you walked in, make sure your cellphones are off for the meeting as a courtesy to everyone present. The two planning commissions work together on land use and zoning matters within the rural areas surrounding the city. The area is displayed, or will be displayed, on the screen. After information and testimony is presented on an agenda item, the members will discuss the matter and then each planning commission will vote independently to arrive at a decision. When the joint agenda is completed, the city planning commission will adjourn and the meeting will continue as the county planning commissioner considers items beyond the joint jurisdiction. Any final action on the conditional use permit request will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal is filed. By, at the planning office by Tuesday, September 5th at nine, at 5:00 PM. In the event of appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission and city council for a joint hearing on Tuesday, September 26th at 5:00. Is there a motion to approve the July 24th Planning Commission minutes for each side?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
City side, motion? So moved.
Second.
Seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries on the city side.
Thank you. There are no consent agendas, other items, so we'll move directly to the regular agenda. We'll need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
City side for approval of the regular agenda?
So moved.
Seconded to approve the regular agenda. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries on the city side.
Thank you. The following procedure will be followed. I will request planning staff to present a report on an item and I will, and anyone requesting, from the audience requesting to address the issue, will need to get up, come to the microphone, state your name and address, and then speak so we have documentation of where you're from. So, you'll have to get up and come to the mic and not just speak from where you're sitting. So then, we'll go ahead and get started with the first item, which is item two.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Item number two is a conditional use permit, seventeen dash fifty-four. This is a request to allow a larger accessory building than twelve hundred square feet. The property is located at four seven six four six Slip Up Creek Road. This is about a mile and a half north of Sioux Falls in Andy's Acres, so it'd be where, on the Jim Zweep Memorial Highway and then turn off to the right. As you know, we limit the size of accessory buildings in a rural subdivision of four more lots to twelve hundred square feet, and this applicant is requesting a total of twenty-three seventy-six. And he, as you can see on the site plan, he's requesting a thirty by sixty-foot structure with a twelve by twenty-four-foot bump out for a total square footage of twenty-three seventy-six. And the lot adjacent to it, this shows the subject property, and the lot next to it does have a, has two accessory structures that total thirteen sixty. Back in two thousand and nine, there was a request by a property owner at twenty-two five nine one five North Claudus Avenue who requested a conditional use permit for twenty-three ninety-six. At a joint planning commission, that CUP oh-nine dash seventy-four, what, for, to allow that larger building was denied. And I have prepared a map that shows the location of that subject property. And in two thousand and ten, the property about approximately four lots away at four seven six three eight Slip Up Creek Road requested a conditional use permit to allow thirteen twenty, so that was a hundred and twenty square feet larger. That was approved. So, the planning, the applicant's plan to use that building as accessory building should not really impact the neighborhood and the, but the applicant's request is the first time in this development where you'd have a, a building that greatly exceeds twelve hundred square feet. So, in this situation, the request greatly exceeds what is, has been typically allowed in that neighborhood, and based on the fact that we tend to want to be consistent and fair to all the people in the neighborhood, staff is recommending denial. However, we are suggesting that we could allow up to thirteen sixty of, of larger accessory buildings. That is what is adjacent to the property, to the east. So, this property here has thirteen sixty. This property is the conditional use permit that was approved for, what was it, twelve, excuse me, thirteen twenty. And this property is the request that was denied at twenty-seven ninety-six. So, I am recommending denial. If you should decide to allow a, a building that's thirteen sixty, I have a set of proposed conditions in your staff report which you could use. And I'll go over some of the slides with you. So, this is the subject property. The applicant is proposing, if you look at the site plan, I'll go right back to the site plan here shortly, or quickly. Here's the house. The applicant wants to put the larger building back here. This is on a three-fourths acre lot. So, here's the building with the little bump out that I explained. And this is the subject property. You can sort of see they have staked it out in the back, and I went back and took a couple So, this is the, the area where they have proposed to put that larger building right This is looking to the south. This is the conditional use permit for the larger building, the one that's twelve, thirteen And the other built, the other property was denied, so there is no larger building there to take a picture of. But I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have, and... Any questions?
Any questions? Let's get the proponent.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
What I wanted to ask is, need to understand a little more about the previous conversation regarding recommendations on sizes that would be allowed in light of the fact that this request would seem to qualify for that suggested change to a larger square footage.
It, it would.
And the second question I had is, if it's, if it's going to be approved, you recommended a group of other conditions, including that it'd only be allowed for personal residential storage, et cetera. There's another group of those. Does that hold true for the twelve hundred square foot buildings now?
Well, if, if it's under twelve hundred square feet, you don't need a conditional use permit, and it's just by right, by the process of obtaining a building permit. So, we don't, we wouldn't put conditions on it like a building permit, but in, in any event, no commercial activity would be allowed because it's not zoned for that.
That's what I was wondering. Thank you. Other questions?
Scott, could you tell me exactly the size of the lot there?
It's point seven-four acres. It's three-fourths of an acre.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Scott. So, I would now open the floor for proponents or for the petitioner to come and present Is the petitioner here?
Yes. Yeah, I'm wanting, wanting to put the building up for personal use, of course. On the square footage, actually the building itself is going to be two thousand eighty-eight square feet, but I have a, I have a storage unit there now that's twelve by twenty-four, which is another two eighty-eight square feet, so that would make the twenty-three seventy-six. That building is removable if necessary. As far as my neighbors, I, I've talked to a few of them around there. None of them have a problem with it. Like they said, they would rather see a building up there to store the stuff in than seeing stuff set outside, so, and that's part of the reason I want to put up the building.
Scott, you need to give us your name and address.
Oh, the Scott Swack, Tony, I can't remember the address right now. Um, Scott Swack, forty-seven six forty-six Slip Up Creek Road, Sioux Falls, Hot Cola.
Any questions for the petitioner?
Scott, would a, would a smaller building work for you? And you mentioned taking down the other outbuilding you've got.
Yeah, the other outbuilding is portable. It, it can be, it can be drug off the property. It's on skids. Um, yeah, a smaller building would work, but I kind of got this one planned for all the stuff that I own and would like to put in it.
Okay, thank you very much.
I got, I got, I guess I got one more question here. Sorry about that. Would you see in the future, any plans, put any plumbing in there? Is it just going to be, be a shed on a slab of cement?
It's going to be a slid, a shed on a slab of cement, yep.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the proposal? Okay, step forward to the podium, please.
My name is John Beck. I live at four seven six four five Sorrel Street, which is directly kitty-corner behind Scott's property over there. My question about going to that biggest square footage, like the twenty-four hundred square feet, is that going to possibly set a precedence for other people wanting to build bigger than the twelve hundred square foot in that area? A lot of the lots out there are a little bit less than an acre, and it's a, it's a really nice area with a lot of people have nice yards. I just anticipate if, if we start allowing the twenty-four hundred square feet or so instead of twelve hundred, that a lot of other houses out there, properties, might start to put that big of a building out there and kind of get away from that more open feeling out there and not so many big buildings out there. I know there's a house out there, the one that's in the purple on the map up there, I can't quite see who that is, but they built a really big building out there a couple years ago, and it just kind of looks out of place. So that's, that's my concern, is getting too big of a building. I'm all for Scott building out there. He's done a lot of great things with the property so far, but I just don't, I don't want to see something so big out there.
Mr. Beck, if he built the, if he took out the smaller building, would that make it easier for you to live with, so to speak? He's got this existing building that he could remove and build this one larger building.
Um, yeah, it would, but I, I still think, I don't know, what is that, two thousand square feet in Scott, that you're thinking of then?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be right at two thousand square feet.
So that'd be like a forty by fifty then?
Thirty-one, thirty by sixty, and then the twelve by forty-four and stuff like that.
So, yeah, that, that'd make it better, but I just, I don't want to see that precedent get started out there for such a big building.
Any other questions from the city side? Any more speakers? Any other? Yeah, looks like we have another one.
Tony Lee, four seven five six three, two hundred and fifty-fifth street. And I would actually, this is a hot topic in several areas north of Sioux Falls, and I actually wrote a letter to planning and zoning addressing this, that it's not just about having an additional outshed. It is what is the adjacent properties like? Does it fit the neighborhood? And how does it affect? And, and I guess, this is the first time I've been here in a long time where I actually heard what is in the adjacent properties for an outshed. So, I'm really in favor of hearing this to be scaled back. And is it directly in my neighborhood? No, but I was here not that long ago where a gigantic shed is going in, just, you know, outbuildings of four thousand square feet, and I have nine hundred square feet, and I'm the adjacent property owner. So, it's important. It is important. It's going to continue to, to develop, and it really does need to be taken into consideration. I, I personally don't know them, know them, but I don't live that far from them. And so, I encourage you to really put a lot of thought into what is adjacent to the properties. There's a reason for that. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? All right, at this time, those comments are closed, and each commission will discuss
I guess, I'd maybe start, if I may.
Yes.
Madam Chair. I would like to try to find a size that does seem to fit the area, hopefully that would be acceptable to the applicant, still allow him to do what he's trying to do, but fit within the precedent that's already been set. Maybe that's, I think thirteen sixty is what we were looking at. Maybe that's thirteen sixty. Maybe it's fifteen hundred. I, I guess I don't know for sure. I, I do believe there's got to be something that we can figure out that fits there and hopefully be acceptable. I guess I would look for discussion from both sides on what do we think that size could be that, that fits the area, still gives the applicant a chance to try to reach his goals.
Comments from the city side in response?
I think we should try to do that. If I may, so Scott, you said two thousand square feet was what you could minimally get by with?
Yeah.
So...
Better, I, I would drop it down to eighteen hundred. That would be just the, just the thirty by sixty. I'll just step off.
Mr. Chair, in, in my opinion, I think we should just leave it the way it is, in my opinion. I don't think we should increase it at this time. It is a controversial issue. I appreciate everybody coming out. I know it takes time out of your evening to state your opinion and voice your concerns, and I, I think there's something that we should take into consideration within these locations, and I think we should continue with the way that things are as they're set today, and not increase the size.
You're saying to leave it twelve hundred rather than even the recommendation?
I am, and again, I think we have to look at these as a case-by-case situation and appreciate the neighbors coming out and voicing their opinions, and I think that's what we need to take into account.
Could I ask the question again of the previous discussion about twenty-four hundred square feet? I mean, you commented that that was something that the city was interested in. I, I didn't quite see how that fit the recommendation you just made.
Well, we're going to have probably a discussion at, under items like new business or old business when the two items that are going to be heard tonight in front of this body, these bodies, we'll have a discussion about whether you feel like you'd like to amend your ordinance as well. The city staff, the planning staff, Mike Cooper and Jeff Schmidt, have indicated to me that they would like to see some kind of a change because they feel that we're being, that we are receiving way too many of these requests. So, we either, even, and I appreciate your, your suggestion to hold the line, you know, basically leaving at twelve hundred, and if that's specifically for this site, that, I understand that, but if that's to leave it at twelve hundred throughout the joint jurisdiction area, you will continue to get these requests. I mean, it's just as simple as that because we, we get, there's a lot of interest when people move out and have a little acreage, they want a larger building to tinker in, to have their boats in, whatever, keep their equipment, and so these, we, we get a lot of these requests, and so, something to consider.
And, Mr. Chair, excuse me, I, I agree with that, and I think once they do that review and come up with a plan of action or suggestions or comments, more than happy to hear that and hear what their suggestions are after they review that information. Come back in front of us and then make a, state your case, and then we can review it at that time. Does that make sense?
We can prepare something in writing and provide it to you. And, you know, the other option, and excuse me, is you, you can deny the, the request, and if we change the ordinance to twenty-four hundred, the applicant certainly can, wouldn't even have to get a conditional use permit, but just so everyone understands the process, to, to undertake an ordinance amendment, you are talking about six months approximately. So, from the time we have a couple discussions at this, in front of this, these bodies, you know, the joint planning commissions, then you do the hearings and you take it to the, the elected officials, it's at least six months.
Mr. Chair, could I ask another question? Excuse me. Your recommendation, if it was approved, was for it not to exceed thirteen sixty, or one thousand three hundred and sixty square feet. Was that based on the size of the lot and in regards to this future discussion? Are you going to prorate things based on the size of lots, or?
No. That, that is, that wasn't my intention. The reason that I fell upon the thirteen sixty is because it's exactly what the neighbor has next door. They have, the property to the east has two accessory buildings that total thirteen sixty. And so, when we talk about, for example, the neighbor asked, you know, what this might mean if we allow a larger building. So, typically what that means is when we start getting requests in Andy's Acres, the subdivision, we would then allow people to have a building, or we would recommend that if someone else wanted a larger building, that we would allow the building that's basically the largest building in the neighborhood, which then could be Scott Swack's at twenty-three seventy-six, or two thousand, whatever, should you allow a larger building.
Scott, with your alternate recommendation, the thirteen sixty, was that including that two eighty-eight shed that's there, or was that separate?
It makes, it, it's just a total, a total of thirteen sixty.
So, total if it's five buildings?
Yep.
You were talking total?
Total building. So, they could have one building at thirteen sixty, or two buildings, or whatever.
Madam Chair, I, I appreciate Andy's comments there. I, I'm not in complete agreement with them. I think that people do have more and more stuff these days, whether it's, I think we currently have a limit of four snowmobiles is all you're supposed to have, something like that. David told us, is that four? Three? Only three snowmobiles? What am I going to do? I don't own any. But anyway, I, this is obviously an important issue for the county because we, we probably every, every month when we meet, we probably have five or six to exceed, and I've been in places that were sixteen thousand square feet or ten thousand square feet. Those, those are ginormous. But in, in this case here, I think I'm, I'm going to favor the applicant having outbuildings totaling as much as two thousand square feet, and that's a motion I'll make. Doesn't mean we have to agree. I mean, this is...
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that. And I'd just like to state also that two thousand isn't that big. I know that's a concern to the neighbors out there, but what would your feelings be if you had a lot of automobiles, antiques out in his yard? Would that be devaluing your property? Is that what we'd hear next? You know, they'd say if it was inside, it'd be much better, so I'm going to echo with what Jeff said, and I, I'd prefer to have it at two thousand square feet.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I think we'll need to discuss and confirm, but I want to just read through the conditions so that that's clear. So, the total accessory building would not exceed two thousand square feet. A building permit is required prior to construction. An inspection of the proposed new accessory building would be made to ensure it does not exceed two thousand square feet. Only personal residential storage shall be allowed. No commercial uses or commercial storage. All outdoor buildings shall, lighting shall be full cutoff and fully shielded design, and the planning and zoning department deserves the right to enter and inspect the accessory building at any time after proper notice to the owner. So, do I have your motion and second correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And you, yes, and you can have a different motion, and then we'll try and agree.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the adoption similar to the county's motion with regards to two thousand square feet and the additional conditions as indicated.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll make a second for discussion.
Okay.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to make a parallel motion to the county at two thousand maximum. Discussion.
I'm, I'm just going to hold firm to what I said earlier. I just don't think that we should be picking a square footage just because of that, you know, people have stuff. I, I think that they should just continue to come in front of us, and we make, we hear the neighbors, we hear those discussions, we hear those concerns, and make our decision based upon that at that time. So, I appreciate the comments, but I am not in favor of this.
And I would be in favor of the one thousand three hundred and sixty square foot, which is similar to the adjacent neighbor as well as the lot that's two doors down, at thirteen twenty and thirteen sixty, so that it's compliant to what's, or it's similar to what's there now.
And that's a good point, Sharon. I, I would agree with you on that as well.
Any other discussion?
I agree with what you said.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion is denied. So, do I have a countering motion that we can vote upon?
I would move that the applicant be allowed to build a thirteen sixty square feet, one thousand three hundred and sixty square feet building, with the conditions that it, as outlined by the staff.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll make a second to that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to go with the staff recommendations, including those conditions, and the thirteen hundred and sixty square feet. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. So we have a motion on the city side of thirteen sixty limit with the conditions as presented.
And I believe it comes back to us now, for us for further discussion?
Yeah.
Or else it goes back to the joint meeting of the city and county commission.
No, that's not correct.
It's not correct? Okay.
It says, I have it written here, I thought, I thought maybe this would happen, so I quickly grabbed the ordinance. It says, "When one of the commissions votes to grant a conditional use permit and the other votes to deny it," so basically if you're not in agreement, the permit is deemed to be denied, and the petitioner may appeal the, the decision to the governing bodies, which would be the joint city council and county commission. So, if you do not agree, it's considered denied. The applicant has the right to appeal it on.
Okay. So this has been denied. You have, so Scott, then if you're interested in appealing, that would be to file into the office by Tuesday, September twenty, September 5th, pardon me, at 5:00 PM. Thank you. We will move on to the next item, item number three.
Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This is a conditional use permit, number seventeen fifty-nine, to allow a larger accessory building. The request for the accessory building is three thousand... The request for the accessory building is three thousand square feet and is located at seven thousand three hundred and nine West Twelfth Street. Here's the proximity map. You can see that it's located approximately a quarter mile west of the West Twelfth Street and Saratoga Avenue intersection. And it's located in a subdivision. It's also in a, kind of an island that's surrounded by the city of Sioux Falls with several of its neighbors. The petitioner would like to construct a twenty-five hundred square foot accessory building. And then there's a couple of other smaller accessory buildings on the site that make up the, the total request of three thousand square feet. Currently, the, the site plan is, looks like this where they have this, the, the building on the west side of the lot. I believe the petitioner will be presenting a slightly altered site plan based on the conversation earlier today. So I won't get into a whole lot of detail on where the site plan is laid out. But I will say that the, the lot has, is located in a floodplain. And the current site plan as it was laid out has the building located within a regulatory floodway, which is highly regulated in the floodplain ordinance. Even if the, the petitioner was to be able to move the building out of that floodway, they would have to still meet all the floodplain requirements that is for the regular floodplain. That would include possibly raising the base flood, or raising the, the floor of the building to meet that base flood elevation. With the floodplain elevation and being surrounded by the city of Sioux Falls, the city of Sioux Falls and the county do differ in how we treat our floodplains. So once annexation occurs, it is likely that this building would be a non-conforming structure in the floodplain of Sioux Falls. The area around this parcel is surrounded by primarily suburban-style subdivisions. The, there's not much for larger accessory buildings in the area. The, the property, as you can see here, kind of adjacent but down road at the same time, has approximately twenty-six hundred square feet of accessory building. And as you heard in the last one, typically we try to approve similar sized buildings that are next to each other. Recently, in two thousand fifteen, there was a parcel located down this way on the map that was requested thirty-six hundred square feet and that request was denied.
Kevin, could you point that out again? I was looking down.
So it's way down here off the map actually, but it's in that same kind of island.
Thank you.
I'll go over some of the site pictures. So this would be looking down the driveway of the property. You can see the couple of small structures on the property that are existing. This is the, the property where the proposed building would be going. You can see that there is slope here, like the house has been raised up as well as the shed is raised up quite a bit higher than the surrounding property at one, it was raised at that time. And then this is the driveway looking out. There's not a whole lot of room in the side yard for any sort of expansion. As of right now, the, the, with staff has a similar request as the, or proposal is the, the last conditional use permit, where we're recommending denial based on the last recommendation, but have left a proposed group of conditions for you to consider if you were to approve this construction or this building. Is there any questions?
I was just wondering if we're aware of how great the differences are between the city and the county flood ordinances, floodplain ordinances.
They're similar, but my understanding is a city has what's called a free board. And so where we would allow that, that floor of the building to be at the base flood elevation, where the city requires, I believe it's two feet, two feet. So they would have to lift their building two feet higher than where they would be for the county.
With the base of the, okay.
So Kevin, if, Madam Chair, Kevin, if you were to build a building and raise the floor two feet above the highest flood level, wouldn't that obstruct and therefore cause the flood to back up and hold the water on the upstream properties?
It could, and that's primarily the reason why development in the, oops, too far, in the floodway, that dark blue area is not allowed. Because the floodway is where the water travels its fastest and it would back up even further in the floodway. Where in the floodplain, the water is, would be just rising and just kind of pooling in that area. So that's why you can develop in the floodplain, but not the floodway.
Would, would you mind showing with your arrow where exactly the building is being proposed between the two, the dark blue and the light blue? I mean, is there room to move it out of the floodway?
So right now, the building is proposed to be right about here. And there is room to place it, say, right here. As I spoke with the petitioner earlier, that does pose some problems as that, the septic system is right there. So he might be able to squeeze it behind here. But then that poses some problems with access to the, the building with being able to get a driveway in. So it, it, there's kind of pluses and minuses to it all.
Thanks.
Questions on the city side? Okay, we would like to hear from the petitioner, please. Would you please come forward and state your name and address?
Alex Aug, oh, sorry, Alex Augusted, seventy-three oh nine West Twelfth Street. As he mentioned, I did talk to him earlier today about moving that building. I do have a picture here. I don't know if, it's a way to hand it out. Oh, you got the right there.
It'll take a sec. Love your T-shirt.
Thank you.
Can't wait for next season.
Me too.
Game of Thrones, Scott.
I didn't know what it was.
Hey, winter is coming.
I guess it's not really reading all the. Well, I heard she just. Oh, there we go, yep. Man, as you see here, the, that's the line for that floodway, right there. And then, and I, and I don't need that full space there. I was just gonna, the twenty-five hundred was just kind of a guess, so I'm willing to go down more, especially since I'll be putting it where that, where the garage is now. I'd be getting rid of that and so I don't need that extra space there. Then also, we talked about putting it over here, but there's a util, or there's an easement here that I'd have to stay away from and I wouldn't have easy access to the building. And as far as the septic system being there, I did talk to the city today of engineering. There already is, they already stubbed sewer line for my property and they said I would just have to pay the, the partial fee to get hooked up to it and which I'm not opposed to doing so that I could get rid of my septic system, which is right here. And then I could build the square foot footage right there. Twenty, you know, twenty-four, like you guys mentioned before, twenty-four hundred is a reasonable, what people have been asking for in the subdivisions. And so twenty-four hundred square feet would be plenty for me. And then, what was the other? Oh, yeah, because before when I first drew that out, I didn't know that that floodway was right there. So I'm actually glad that he pointed that out in his notes. So it'd be out of the floodway. And as far as the person asking for the conditional use permit prior, just a block southeast, or a block and a half southeast to me, he's up on a hill by resident, like higher end residential homes. And I'm down on the bottom of this hill, which it's all covered by trees. So none of those residential homes would even be able to see my property or my shed. So it wouldn't be an eyesore for any residential. And right across the way from me is the lake and pond and maybe two residential homes, which I haven't talked to the people across the street who would see the building. But the people who are next to me, I have talked to them. They weren't opposed to me putting it on there. And the only other one that I didn't talk to that was right next door is vacant. So I know my neighbors are okay with me building a shed there, except for I didn't talk to the people across the street. But like I said, I'm willing to lower it down to twenty-four hundred. I'd, I'd like to have at least twenty-four hundred. And yeah, if there's any questions other than that.
Madam Chair, so Alex, you may have heard the comment that within the city, they would require you to build up two feet higher than, and is that something that you would consider doing?
Yeah, I'd, I'd consider doing that if, I mean, I don't necessarily want to put all that much dirt in there, but if that's a requirement that they're, they would want me to have, I wouldn't be opposed to doing it.
It seems to me that this does look likely for someday to be part of the city and that building, a, a non-conforming structure would be imprudent. Would we be able to add that?
You can add that as a condition that they meet the city's floodplain development ordinance.
Okay, let's, here's some more from others on this.
Any questions on the city side for the position, petitioner?
Questions on the city side? Do we have an opponent or?
I'll ask. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wish to speak, wishes to speak to this item? All right, at this time, the floor will be closed and each side will debate or discuss.
Madam Chair, I think the idea of doing the twenty-four hundred square feet and may, having it make the city's standard makes sense. And.
And that it has to be out of the floodway.
Right. I'll, I'll make that motion.
Excuse me, Commissioner Barth, can you clarify, what did you say the size?
The twenty-four hundred square feet down from three thousand and that it would conform to the city's standard for the altitude, along with the other conditions.
Is there a second?
I would second if that was mo, his motion.
Discussion.
I was thinking the same thing and then on the size, it's, it's even a little bit smaller than another one that's in the area. So we're still staying obviously within the precedence that's been set. As long as it's out of the floodway and the other motions that Jeff made, I think that makes sense.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, city side entertain a motion.
I would make a motion similar to Commissioner Barth where the building would be two thousand four hundred square feet with added condition of meeting city floodplain requirements.
Second. Been moved and seconded to make a parallel motion to the county, including the flood requirements and twenty-four hundred square feet max for all accessory.
Could I just ask of staff, so if it, if and when it is annexed into the city, then is it still a non-conforming use at twenty-four hundred square feet?
Not if it's been approved at this point by the joint commission.
And it's, okay, thank you.
For discussion. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries on the city side.
All right, thank you very much.
So if I could just address the commission again quickly. I talked to Mr. Zwack and he left, but I need to correct my previous interpretation of the ordinance because when you go, there's several criteria here. Under number two, it says, when both the planning commissions vote to grant a conditional use permit, but the conditions are not identical, which yours was one, one square footage, yours was another, the application shall present, be presented to the joint meetings of the city or county commission and city council for final action. So the, the request is automatically forwarded to the joint city. No one has to appeal. It just automatically goes. And I guess there'll either be a reconciliation at the elected bodies or, or if they don't agree, then it's denied, so. So I just wanted to make that clear. And then that leads me into the next item of, as you heard, we discussed with the city of Del Rapids about amending our ordinance to twenty-four hundred square feet for accessory buildings. I, maybe that's not exactly what you'd like to do. If you'd like us to research this more, to have input from the city planning staff in, in a writing form that we could have a discussion, a more formal discussion, I'm willing to do that. It's just, I'll take whatever direction you'd like to give me. Sure.
Just so you're aware, with the director, we have had the discussion about increasing the square footage for accessory buildings. So basically doubling from twelve hundred to twenty-four hundred square feet. And staff is in favor of that increase.
Was there any discussion, Diane, about the last example we saw where it's an encapsulated piece of property within the city, but it's still officially county? Did you have any discussion about some of those odd conditions?
No, and the one other discussion point I think we'd like to have, and I mentioned to Scott, and that is basically doing it based on a proportion of the size of the lot and what the size of the accessory building could be. So in the case of the first item, that was, I think, point seven four acres. That seems aggressive to have a building that's twenty-four hundred if you've got, you know, an acre and a half like this second item. You know, then it seems a little bit more logical to have a, a larger size building there. So I, I think we have to take into account the size of the, the parcel. So there's more discussion to be had, but I just wanted to know that we'd had some initial conversations on it.
I think that's a, a, a good basis, you know, that we would benefit by having incorporated in what you're drafting. I assume the city and the county would do that together?
Yeah, we would work together and coming up with some kind of language.
Yep.
So would you like us to come up with some kind of language and bring it back to you? So I'm sort of envisioning in my head, if it's, let's say it's less than an acre, it may be eighteen hundred square feet. And if it's more than an acre, it may be allowed to go up to twenty-four hundred. Just, that might be one option. But I can work with Mike Cooper and Jeff Schmidt and we can come up with a size of a lot and a corresponding size of a proposed building.
I think that makes sense for really both, both sides, that you, you do that research, if you will, and then, and then let us know what kind of both parties come to agreement on.
Could it maybe be, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I said we just, we'll put that on as a formal, a discussion item then, when, when we, we typically meet every month, it seems. So it will, we'll get it on there.
And I was just gonna ask if, if it could make sense that it be a percentage of square footage of the lot, maybe with a cap. So if you get into a four acre parcel, maybe, you know, ten thousand square foot building being an automatic permissive use might be a little extreme, but could we do a percentage?
We could with, I, I think from what I have understood, the, the cap that the city would like to see is twenty-four hundred square feet. So with cap is, I think, been discussed already, just that lot size and what that sliding scale might be is what we'll work on.
Okay.
I don't have any other items.
All right. Does anyone else have any other items to bring forward? Otherwise, I'll consider motions for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's for adjournment? We're adjourned, thank you.
Thanks for coming, you guys. Good evening. Okay, now we'll start our third meeting of the evening. This will call to order the regular meeting of the.